Good evening. I'm Eden Winfeymer, First Black Woman. I'm joined by Selectmen Steve Hall and Selectperson Amanda Thompson. And I call this January 24th meeting to order. Welcome on board, Amanda.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So we need a couple motions to add some items to the agenda. First is a motion to add the Board of Education Administrators Association contract, and that would be for 6H.
I'll make a motion to include 6H, the Board of Education Administrator contract.
Second. All right, that motion is... Are all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 6H is added. Next is 6I, a motion... I'll need a motion to add Granberg Park discussion.
I will make a motion to add the Granberg Park discussion as item 6I.
All those in favor of adding 6I, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. And seeing no one online or in person, we'll move on to correspondence. There's some correspondence from Eversource regarding the safety of natural gas. We do have several homes in town, not too many, but some homes on natural gas and our town buildings, our schools, and some commercial properties that are on public gas or on natural gas. So I posted a couple flyers just to make people aware of things to notice. And one of the flyers that I posted is "Education and Awareness for First Responders and Public Officials", and the other one is "Customer Gas Safety Education Campaign". You probably are familiar with it. It came out this fall. Smell, weed, tell if you smell any kind of gas. So those will be posted on the town or are posted on the town website, so anyone can post. And the next is just announcing the 2024 MDC Household Hazardous Waste Collection Schedule. And East Granby goes to Windsor Locks each year, and this year it's on October 19th, 2024, at the Public Works Garage, 6 Stanton Road in Windsor Locks. And just a reminder that our recycling center, we collect... We do not collect used motor oil or antifreeze, but we do collect our batteries, electronics, paint, scrap metal, brush, free-on equipment. You can bring up to two pieces of equipment, and they're $25 each, to recycle those, and up to 20 pounds of cocaine tank.
Just one note on that, Eden. Anyone from the MDC towns can go to any of the MDC sponsored events.
Correct.
So you don't have to wait until October if you want to make the trip to Windsor.
Thank you.
You can do that, so, and that's coming up on May 4th.
Yep, so this waste collection schedule will be posted online also. From here. All right. Number four on the agenda is our previous meeting minutes from November 29th, December 27th, and January 26th. So we can do them separately? Yeah, we'll do November and December separately.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the December 27th and the November 22nd meetings.
November 29th.
That's where I'm starting, the 29th and the 12/27 meeting minutes.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of accepting those minutes?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve the January 22nd meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, all those in favor of the January 22nd meeting?
Aye.
Aye, okay, those minutes. Harry. Old Business, number five. Shared Services, we're tabling that for tonight. I don't have anything new at the moment. Okay, under New Business, Tax Collector Report. So our tax collector highlights every month, and I don't know if the highlights showed up in the... They should have, sorry. So the collections are right on track. If anyone looks at this, it looks like we're down a bit. And CoreLogic, which is our escrow company. And as of December's report, we didn't get that deposit put in, but it is now put in, so it's received and deposited, so we're right on track with where we should be. We're a little bit ahead of where we were last year at this time, which is good. So, and we should be at about 98% collected, which is in line for last year. Any questions on the Tax Collector Report?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll just need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept a tax collector's analysis.
Second. All right, all those in favor of accepting the Tax Collector Report? Say aye. All right. Okay. Next on the agenda is Financials, Board of Selectmen Financials. We did have... I have it listed as General Government Budget Drivers. We did have a Board of Finance meeting on June 16th, and Board of Selectmen and Board of Education presented their budget drivers to the Board of Finance. And I'll go through Board of Selectmen's. This is available if anyone has questions in my office. Feel free to reach out. One is ARPA funding is a budget driver. We have staff paid with full or partial ARPA funds, which expire on July... Excuse me, June 30th. We will extend a couple positions possibly through September 30th due to planned work requirements, i.e. Park and Rec programs. Salaries is a driver. We have two union contracts which expire on July 1st. We do... This says preliminary agreement in place with police union, but it is completed, and the Board of Selectmen is meeting on Monday to ratify the contract. And we'll owe back to July 1st any increases in the salaries. Public Building Line, we have a town custodian on disability. We're not sure of his return. The Fire Department, the inclusion of maintenance. We're including maintenance and equipment into the operating budget and taking some out of the capital budget. Police, we have an additional officer on policing expenses that were not in the FY '24 budget that we'll have to add back in as he was rehired. State of Connecticut accreditation requirements. You're familiar with this.
Infinitely.
We will... There is new requirements which we have to abide by. So we will probably need to hire a part-time person to handle the management of the fund, of the records. So we'll have to fund that position. Public Works, the cost of fuel could be a driver. Insurance increases are always a possibility. And the contingency fund, we'd like to restore it back to its original $54,000. So that's about a $23,000 driver. And the narrative that we provided for the Finance for year-to-date is we're 49% spent to date, where we budgeted 50%, so we're looking good, and we hope to be able to return $60,000 to $70,000 to the Board of Finance or to the town at the end of June. Any questions?
Nope, pretty cut and dry.
All right, moving along to 6C. We have appointments. First off, excuse me, I'll start with Commission on Aging. We have a member, John Webster, who's an alternate now, and he'd like to move to a member position. And we also have a new member, which we're really happy about, Warren Multimore, who will be joining Commission on Aging.
I'd like to make a motion to add John Webster and Warren Multimore to the Commission on Aging.
Second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, welcome aboard to Commission on Aging. Next, we have the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Organization. We have two reappointments. One is for Mike Crammon, and the other is for Paula Soft. And I believe it is for... It'll be for a three-year term, so... The term ended in June 26th, and they never came forward for a reappointment, so it's going to backdate to June 26th and go for three years. And they're both the same.
Okay.
We'll just need a motion for Mike Crammon and Paula Soft.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Crammon... Or reappoint Mike Crammon and Paula Soft to the Management Committee, Wildlife Management Committee.
Wild and Scenic.
Wild and Scenic Management Committee, excuse me.
Uh, second. All right, all those in favor of those appointments, say aye.
Aye.
And I neglected to send you three more appointments, but I have them here. So our Town Clerk is appointed, our Tax Collector is appointed, and our Treasurer is appointed. So I can do all three of them at once. So Christine Gallagher is our Town Clerk. Sherri Clemmons is our Tax Collector, and Kelly Jacobs is our Treasurer. And these appointments are for January 1st, 2024, to January 6th, 2026, for the year.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Christine Gallagher, Sherri Clemmons, and Kelly Jacobs to their respective positions.
All right, all those in favor of these appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, next on the agenda is an ARPA funds update. As of now, we have a balance of $22,630.38. I did mention at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, we're hoping to hold a little bit for the engineering plans for East Granby Farms for the STEAP grant that we won. Not exactly sure how much that's going to cost, but I can't imagine it'll cost that much. Any comments or questions?
I think you touched on it briefly earlier, but just we have several jobs that were covered with the ARPA funds, and you're working with the department head and finance director.
Okay. Yeah, we're meeting with... We're meeting with everyone, all the department heads who are on ARPA right now. Yeah, we have two meetings today, and then we have a couple tomorrow, so. All right. Next are the Police Logs. So November stats. I'll go through them. There were 13 motor vehicle accidents, 12 alarm calls, one criminal mischief, two domestic incidents, two fires, six larcenies, 25 medical assists, seven suspicious incidents, one untimely death, 345 patrol checks, and 650 calls for service. December, there were 30 motor vehicle accidents, 26 alarms, three criminal mischiefs, four disturbances, four domestic incidents, two fires, two fraud, eight larceny, 53 medicals, one emergency committal, one sex assault, 18 suspicious incidents, 25 traffic stops, two untimely deaths, one weapons offense, and 785 patrol checks. So there were 25 traffic stops, and three tickets were handed out and 15 warnings. Things ramped up in December.
I think it showed.
Must be the holidays. It's amazing how much stuff goes on, and sometimes we're not even aware of it. Okay. Next on the agenda is our Business Passport Contest winners. We had a Business Passport Contest. Residents were given passbooks to visit. We'll vote to be businesses and we'll scan each one. And we handed out a lot, but only four were handed in, which made the choosing a lot easier for the winners. So number... The first-place winner of $250 is Lori Kasha with 30 stamps. Second is Michelle Marin. She won $100 with 25 stamps. And Ashley Piansky, she won $50 with 19 stamps. With... Yes, 19 stamps. You can reach out to our office to pick up a check. Probably towards the end of the week or the beginning of next week would be great. All right, so next on the agenda is First Selectwoman's update. It's basically a time we can have a little conversation about a few things. I know people have been asking the status of the Village Center. So we did win a STEAP grant to realign school street. We have... We are waiting from CROG. We're waiting from CROG to just give us guidance of exactly what to do with the road. So it's not as easy as just engineering a new road. We have to wait and make sure that everything that we do is approved through them. So it's just kind of a waiting game with them.
As the administrator of the grant, we have to get permission from them to do almost everything with it because it's still their money.
Right.
It's about the way it's looked at.
Correct. As far as the Penexivity Grant that we won, an RFP went out today for the engineering and design services for the sidewalks throughout town campus in front of center shops and connecting all road to Route 20 and all the way around. So that RFP went out today, and I believe they have until mid-February to bring in their proposals. So that's moving along, which is good. And we touched on ARPA employees, so it's a little bit too soon to see what we can do, if we can work some of these positions into the budget. We do have, unfortunately... Unfortunately, we have to wait until April 3rd to get our directive from Board of Finance, so we're trying to come out with different scenarios. Our Finance Director is forecasting a budget with all of them in it and one with not them in it, and just kind of see where we fall when we get our directive. So we're preparing. Another item I want to talk about is the Police Department won a grant from the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection of $50,000. And $50,000 is for overtime work for our police officers just traffic. So we... Our police officers have been working extra shifts to pull over or to monitor traffic and...
Conduct motor vehicle enforcement.
Thank you. Don't get pulled over. Yeah, so they're going to... You will see them out on the roads more because we do have some funding for it, which is great. And as I mentioned, the police union contract, we should be able to ratify that on Monday. And did you guys have any other questions or anything you want to talk about?
No, I'm genuinely excited about the Village Center project, and to get the sidewalk portion of the program around the telecampus is a good thing. It's nice to see forward progress of it.
Yeah, I'll be excited to have that moving forward, then we can maybe apply for some more grants to extend the sidewalks.
Yeah, and that's something that should be noted, too, is the amount of grant money that's come in in the last couple of years has been absolutely remarkable. They're out there, and we now have people that one, know where to look to sniff them out, and two, how to apply for them properly. So I think we're in great shape that way, and hopefully we continue to move that forward. That's a big deal.
That's the plan. Thank you for giving... Yeah, of course. So next on the agenda is now 6H. This is the Board of Ed Administrators Association contract. I asked the superintendent and the negotiator to provide me with a summary of the changes from the previous contract to this contract. This contract will come in effect in July. And it's a three-year contract, July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027. So some... And these changes, these changes and the differences in the contracts will be available... They're available in my office if anyone wants to reach out and ask for them. So economic changes, the biggest was the salary and annuities and insurances. They're up 8.85% over three years. 3.02 the first year, 2.76 the second year, and 3.06 the third year. Salaries, overall increasing salary alone is 10% over three years. 3.25, then 3.25, then 3.50. Insurance, increased employee medical insurance premium cost share went up by 2.5% over three years. 1% the first year, 1% the second year, and then a half percent the third year. The HSA contributions are consistent with recent changes and features in non-qualified contracts. There's added language that the Board is not obligated to fund any portion of the HSA deductible for retirees or other individuals who want separation from employment. Long-term disabilities plan was revised, the elimination period from 90 days to 180 days to be consistent with benefit in teacher union contracts. The annuity eliminate... There's an elimination of the tiered annuity contribution percentage system ranging from 2.5% to 3.5% at the salary based on years of service and replaced with a flat 3% contribution regardless of years of service, with exception for one administrator to maintain a 3.5% contribution, which they're currently receiving. Substantive language changes. Vacation to permit administrators to work from home with the approval of the superintendent on days when school is canceled due to inclement weather or declared emergency. Vacation to provide as a retirement benefit compensation for up to nine unused vacation days at the end of the school year for an administrator who has provided notice of intent to retire by January 1 of that school year. Vacation to memorialize that administrators per diem payment amount is calculated on the basis of 1 slash 2/6 of annual salary. Holidays to clarify that administrators are granted the holidays specifically identified in Appendix A rather than all state and federal holidays. Another revision is leaves of absence to increase the maximum sick day accumulation from 200 days to 225 days. And finally, leaves of absence to reduce annual personal days from six to five and eliminate need for administrators to state specific reasons falling within category of personal... Defined category of personal time. The superintendent must approve all personal. So again, I just went through it rather quickly, but these are all available in my office. So the Board of Selectmen has 30 days from January 19th, when this was forwarded on by the Board of Ed, to decide to take no further action on it or to move it to a town meeting. So we can vote to take no further action or vote to send it to town. Thoughts?
It seems to be, from what the summary says, it seems to fall in line pretty close to what other school districts are providing. So unless there's any other objection, I would make a motion to vote for no further action.
I agree. I mean, I think they wrote everything out great, and it's a nice balance as far as explaining why the percentages are what they are and kind of where we're at compared to other schools. But I would just want to make sure the public the book of this. I don't think it necessarily needs to go to a town vote, but is it possible to table it and vote on it like at our next meeting? That way, if somebody wanted to look at it and had a comment, they could come to our next meeting. And that way, it doesn't necessarily need to go to a town vote, but it gives people an opportunity to look at it and come in and comment if they want to.
Yeah, I'm not hesitant. Let me see. Yeah, I'm just making sure where the 30 days is good.
Oh, right.
It'd be the 14th, and I don't think we're having a meeting that day, but that's our next meeting. But we can always do a special meeting, too. If you want to give it a couple weeks.
Just in case people want to look at it, I wouldn't want to vote on it without... Because it wasn't on the agenda. Like, if it were on the agenda, and they could have had a chance maybe to ask about it, but it was added today, so.
Makes sense.
That's fair. Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind meeting again whenever, so we can get out, but then it just gives people time.
Sure. Okay, good idea. All right, so we'll just wait on that for... I'll keep track of the time and schedule one other meeting. All right, so then moving along to 6I. So I received an email from Park and Rec member Morgan Bangle, and I'll read the memo I received from her. "As a member of Park and Rec Commission, I'm writing you today regarding Granberg Park and our next steps related to the security and function of the park. In light of the incidents at the park last season, we seem to have a few actions or a combination of options moving forward. One, develop procedures and staffing for the gate to be closed at dusk and open in the morning. Hire a gate attendant to monitor our pass system distinguishing residents and non-residents. Hire a security guard to monitor the park during operating hours. Or four, institute no change, leaving the gate open with no attendant and no security guard." So Morgan in the Park and Rec is just seeking insight. And honestly, we don't have to vote on anything now. Of course, it's a financial situation, too, so I'll be talking with Jay about it, our Finance Director. So she'd like to take our comments back to February's meeting, and then they plan to host a public meeting in March for further discussion. So we know that we have a little bit of time even before summer. I'm glad she started this conversation so we could have a discussion about it.
So I've thought a lot about this, and you know, I guess I'm just a firm believer in got to kind of start from square one. So I know at one point, Park and Rec had talked about doing some signage with like a QR code kind of listing all the rules so that we could hold people to those rules. So I think when we don't have signage telling people what they can or they can't do, then that gives the police, then they can't really do their job because there's what are you enforcing, right? Because there aren't rules there. So I mean, rather than going straight to putting staff there or doing something like that, I would like to see rules posted. And the reason the QR code is good is just because if you have to make edits or you have to make changes, you change them on the website, and it's still the same QR code, and you're not changing signs again, and you're not listing like a million things. You could list like the top important ones, but say, please, you know, scan this QR code for all the rules regarding the park or something like that. But my suggestion would be to start with the signage and allowing the police to enforce those rules first. Because generally, we don't have any issues down there, and you know, it's a great thing for people to be able to go down there and to use that park and to cool it off and that space, and that's a great thing. So I hate to have to limit that, but you know, we need to do one of these. I would start with signage, start with enforcement, and possibly shutting the gates at dusk till dawn if we needed to. I'd hate to go too far in the direction of, you know, starting to have staff and all of that when we haven't done those kind of first steps.
Like I'm saying, the stone ages, when I was a constable in town, we used to go and open the gate up and close it at night. The Police Department did. I don't see where that... Why we couldn't reinstitute that particular thing that would get our gate closed at a reasonable hour. It would provide some level of security. Now, people could, of course, stop at the gate, hop over the gate, and walk into the park to what they're going to do. But at least it's a... At least an amount of deterrent to keep folks out when they're not supposed to be there. And I don't think it's a heavy lift on the part of the police officers to stop by morning and night to open it up.
Public Works was happy to open it every morning.
Very good.
Okay, I was going to say that added costs to have somebody doing that, but if the police or whoever...
Police should have Public Works out there, yep.
In public. It was the weekends that...
It was the weekends that, so what, how this all started for people who don't know is we had an incident this summer where we had several residents call the police, call the state police because there was an abundance of people there. There was probably over 100. I went there and saw it. And the next day, the park was trashed. It took four of us five hours to clean the park. So we were just trying to avoid that. But again, there were no signs, there were no, you know, the question was asked, well, are they allowed there? We didn't even have a close at dusk sign, but we have a close at dusk sign now, which, so at least if people are found there, they can be asked to leave because we have a rule. So I think the signage is a great idea and we can have a conversation with the police.
I mean, we can certainly adopt some ordinances pertaining to governance of the park. I'm sure that there's, there's got to be a few on the books at this particular junction. Regardless, it just probably need to be dusted off and taken a look at, so.
And if you set up signage, you can use it for the other parks too. So whether it's on the Medico material or if it's fire or Scrappy Farms, then you have them.
Right. Okay, it's a good place to start. Anything else? Good. All right, so moving on is public comment. Anything?
Welcome. I was just wondering, I'm just following up. I hadn't heard, I did come to a meeting months ago and someone was supposed to get back to me about what data was being collected by the speed limit sign that's on East Street. And I wonder if anyone has more questions.
I don't have it, but I can ask. Police and Public Works.
Because we are still having.
To the best of my knowledge, and I can't say for certain because I don't know what model and type that is, but to the best of my knowledge, that will collect the speed of the traffic and the time of the day. So as cars pass, there's a log, you know, uploaded or loaded into that machine that says this time this day. Now, if it is, if it's a model that's out there as a, you know, as the lowest level deterrent, it may not record anything. It may just be a, you're going too fast, slow down as a reminder. People get distracted and they don't know how fast they're going. So depending on what type of unit that is, will give you a broad, I mean, the possibilities are, you know, almost too many to enumerate as what it could give you depending on what it is. But at a minimum, it'll tell you the speed. At a maximum, it'll tell you speed, time of day, how many cars, numbers, averages, on and on and on it goes. It doesn't look to be a big enough box to do all the fancy stuff. But like I said, at the bare minimum, it's going to give them just the speed and hopefully it'll give us a little bit of recorded data to go back and analyze.
Yeah, I would just like a follow-up on that because we are still having the problems with a lot of traffic. And I don't know, I didn't have to eat in like more than six months ago about the traffic that's on Route 20. And I know you had said you had a grant. And I don't know if you're able to provide the public with any information about what's happening or happened with that because the traffic on East Street and Route 20, specifically around the intersection of East Street and Route 20 is outrageous.
I did mention earlier in the meeting with the police logs, there were 25 stops in December and three tickets in 15 mornings. And the grant that we won, I mentioned that too, the $50,000 grant. We do have police officers working those overtime shifts, so enforcing traffic.
I will agree with you.
Well, I see them, I see them outside my window sitting there, so.
I will, I will agree with you wholeheartedly that the amount of traffic on Route 20 has increased tenfold. It's just, I don't know where all the cars are coming from. I've been leaving to go into work a bit later here and there lately. And I, honest to God, I was on Route 20. I literally thought there must have been a motor vehicle crash up by Cumberland Farms because the traffic was past School Street and it took forever to get through. And when I finally got there, I realized it wasn't anything other than morning rush hour traffic. It's, you know, I mean, it's one of those things, Granby is growing like a weed. Someone had told me, and again, I'm not going to, I'll throw a number out, but I'm not sure of its veracity, that Windsor's putting in 6,000 housing units. Granby is putting in over 300 in apartments and condos and new residential units. The amount of traffic on Route 20 is going to do nothing but grow and grow and grow. Regardless of what we do in town, the traffic on 20 is just exploding. I don't, I envision a point in the future where Route 20 will be four lanes all the way to Granby Center. And I don't think it's all that far away at this point in time. Obviously, it's pure speculation, but I've watched traffic since I was 16 years old in this town and it is just over the top now. I just can't get over how many cars are on that road.
Dangerous, I mean, I watched one of my neighbors actually crossing Route 20, which I don't even know if the, you know, where you can press the button.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a crosswalk, an activated crosswalk there.
Like, I don't even.
There is, I think there is on East Street.
Okay.
Do you think it still works? Do you?
I don't know if it works. They're actually, they're working, the DOT is working on a couple intersections on Route 20 over the next two years to redo them, so.
Oh, I would love to find out.
And honestly, that's, we're held hostage by the state at that particular junction because Route 20 belongs to them, not us. And when 189 and 187, I mean, for, you know, for all intensive purposes, Hatchet Hill Road, I think, is Route 518. It's not even a, it's not a town road, it's a state road. You know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of our roads that we would like to do things with don't belong to the town. So we are absolutely hamstringing and to try and get something, trying to get to do, the state to do something in little old East Granby when they have, you know, cities and things like that that they have to obviously attend to as well. We're down the list a little bit. So it's, you know, we do what we can with what we have and, actually, I got, I need to, I need to get this out. I need to give a shout out to our Public Works guys because I had, I had three different people tell me on the first snowstorm that they couldn't believe how well the roads were taking care of East Granby. They went across to our neighboring towns on a trip that they were taking and it went from clear roads to a skating rink in a New York minute and they were, they felt compelled to tell me about it. So they did a great job and kudos to those guys.
They were up all last night too and our roads were perfect this morning.
Yeah, right, $26, I think they were up for that big snowstorm, so.
My kid's disappointed that they had to go there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there are, they don't have the specific intersection on this letter, but but they are working on one on Route 20. And construction will be completed in January 2026 for Route 20. I know they're working on the, they're going to be working on the lay at the top of Hatchet Hill too. Hatchet Hill and South Main Street. Updating and whatnot, so. All right, well, next is adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Yara Jones, definitely.